Good evening. This regular meeting of November 8th, 2021, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please. Bradley?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Prohaska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Carolyn Carrie Moss, Board Secretary, as a temporary chairperson.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Carolyn Moss, Board Secretary, as temporary chairperson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I will now accept nominations for the office of President. A second to the nomination is not necessary.
I move that the Board of Education nominate Dr. Kate Parks as President.
I move that the Board of Education nominate Lisa Whitman as President.
Kate Parks and Lisa Whitman have been nominated for the office of President. Is there any discussion?
Well, I offered the -- talked to Jim about doing that, and he was as being Vice President for four years. And in most organizations, it goes from Vice President to President. And he did not do that, want that office. So Lisa's been on the board with her experience, you know, for over six years. Yeah. So I think she would be good to represent that.
And I'll just speak to my -- I'll speak for myself a little bit, as long as you brought it up. I've been Vice President for four years. And I've -- in some organizations, you automatically assume the VP is going to be the President. I hemmed and hawed over it and thought it over. And I decided that there's a lot of factors that come into play being President. There's a lot of work involved. I'm not the youngest person on this board by any stretch. So I defer to some of the youth. But I've enjoyed being Vice President. And I want to make a comment, as long as we're doing this here, if I may. I want to thank Tammy for all of your service, your dedication as being Board President.
My pleasure.
You've been a good leader. You've been a good advocate for the Dubuque Community Schools. And I want to thank you publicly very much.
Thank you.
I would agree with that, Jim. And I'd like to acknowledge Tammy has served as Board President for four years and as Vice President before that for five years. That's a tremendous amount of longevity of service and dedicated service to this board and its children. So thank you, Tammy.
All those who wish to cast a vote for Kate Parks, please signify by raising your hand. All those who wish to cast a vote for Lisa Whitman, please signify by raising your hand. Kate Parks is President.
Congratulations, Kate.
Thank you. I'm excited to serve in this role.
Motion?
I move that the Board of Education close these nominations.
No, the second one.
Oh, Vice President, okay.
The second one.
I move that the Board of Education open the nominations for Board Vice President.
I'm sorry, Jim. I need a motion for the President.
At the bottom of the page.
At the bottom of that. Of the President page.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education elect Kate Parks as President.
Does that require a second?
Yes, that does.
A second then.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education elect Kate Parks as President. Kate, can I have you stand and raise your right hand? I was going to show you the votes. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque in Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Go to the next one. Okay. The next one. So members, they nominate a member of office for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Lisa Whitman for Vice President.
I second if the second is needed, Carrie, or is that -- no, so not.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Seeing no other names, I move that the -- or I guess we need a motion to close the nominations. Is that right, Carrie?
Yeah.
Probably still need to vote.
Oh, sorry.
Even though it's just wanting to stop the vote.
Yep, okay.
I move that the Board of Education elect Lisa Whitman as Vice President.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Do we need to do that?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Lisa. Thank you. So you need to stand and raise your right hand. Lisa Whitman, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as of now or hereafter required by law? I will. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
This seems an appropriate time to say a thank you to our outgoing Vice President, Jim Prohaska. It's been a pleasure being able to watch you serve in that role, Jim, and to say, as always, thank you for your work on behalf of kids and our staff.
And the wonderful thing is Tammy and Jim will not be leaving us.
Right.
They're here with us.
And we owe a lot of gratitude to the positions you guys have held for many years.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be asking you some questions and looking for some guidance.
A lot of it.
We'll be here.
Great.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 8th and the special meeting on November 30th, 2021, as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 8th and the special meeting on November 30th, 2021, as submitted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to bring up just one issue. When we had -- Stan's contract was amended. At the time, we didn't discuss things or say too many things. And I know there'll be more coming down the road here. But Stan, that was a tough decision for us to make as a board. And I want to thank you. We'll be thanking you all along here for all your service, all your leadership in the school district. You've done a great job. But you still have a few months left, so hang in there.
Well, thank you. It's certainly been my pleasure to serve the people of Dubuque and Dubuque County who attended the Community School District. So I'll have more to say in June. But I appreciate your words, Jim. And I appreciate the board's flexibility as I move on to what will be my next adventure for the next ten years of my life. So thank you for allowing me that flexibility.
Stan, I talked with Pat Hyderscheidt, the outgoing Chief Administrator of Keystone I E A today. And he said that the staff at Keystone is so very, very pleased and excited at the opportunity to work with you. And I told him, while that was a gain for the one board that I serve on, to be sure, the Keystone Board, is an incredible loss for us here. And we join Jim in recognizing the incredible work you have done here. And please know, we're grateful.
Well, thank you. As you know, we have a great team here who work hard every day for kids. And so that certainly made it easier for me to have that team. And again, we'll talk more about that in June. But I appreciate those words, Nancy.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 That motion passes. So next on the agenda is a board member recognition.
Well, Tom was grateful enough -- Tom Barton was grateful enough to fill in for a few months when Mike stepped away and he moved out of town. And we wanted to be able to publicly thank Mike -- or Tom. Tom.
Forgot his name already.
I know. I know. Moving on already.
It's been a long time.
So I wanted to be able to -- I kind of reached out to the board. And based on Tom's experience, I, you know, he served three terms as on the school board.
Five, including -- I don't know what to call this last one. A stint, a term, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Adventure.
Many, many years.
A sentence.
Many years. On the school board. And so he was the -- and had not been off all that long. So he was the most logical choice for us to be able to bring in, who could be caught up to speed real quickly. And I am forever grateful for you to take that on. I know I promised you that there would not be any controversy. I apologize for that. It's out of my control. But we do appreciate you stepping into this role when I asked you to do that and the board asked you to do that. So I am forever grateful. And I know you wanted to be able to come up and hopefully be kind for us.
Well, as long as you ask.
How many pages are there?
I almost forgot. Open the door to this, but.
Well, I've got just a few things to share over the next three hours or so here. My fifth term, or stint, or sentence, or purgatory, or whatever you want to call it, smooth sailing. I was guaranteed, smooth sailing. This is going to be easy. No problems on the horizon. Yeah, you know. So Michael Corleone in Godfather III, you know, I think the line is something like, "Just when I thought I was getting out, they pulled me back in." So here I am. I have a couple of things for the board. Couple of gifts. One of them is, this is a -- some copies of Robert's Rules of Order and Parliamentary Procedure. So you can all have those. We had some funny discussions about Parliamentary Procedure over the last three or four months here. Let's see, what else do I have here?
Oh, my goodness.
I've got stuff.
A whole bag of tricks.
I've got --
Treats.
Let's see. I have some Almond Joy bars. Because Almond Joy's got nuts. Mounds don't, right? So to be involved with the school board, there's got to be a little bit of -- you're partially nut, at least. So there's that.
Look who's talking, who did five stints.
Yeah, tell me about it. So there's that. But I've really enjoyed, really enjoyed working with all eight of you, as well as Carrie and the administrative team. I mean, it's been terrific. Lisa, I always know when I swing through Fidelity Bank, you're a sitting duck. Your office is right in the main lobby. So I know if I ever want to get my school board fixed, I know I can go hang out with Lisa.
Yep, you can come talk.
She can't get away from me. Anderson, you've become a great friend and really a top-shelf community leader. How many boards are you on?
A few.
Eight. And they're all important boards, too. So I would like you to give a message to your cheater son, Aiden. But I would like a Connect Four rematch. Anderson's son and I had a Connect Four showdown when I left the board the last time. And he kind of, I don't know if he -- I don't know what he did, but he destroyed me. So I would like a rematch. He can name the time, the place, and the terms. Nancy, we've been friends since we helped create the Site Council at Washington Junior High, when it was a junior high, 30 years ago with Art Rolling. So we've had some great memories. Was there like a Site Council consultant named Stan?
Yes, there was. And he was with New Iowa Schools Development Corporation.
That's right. NISDEC.
NISDEC.
Stan, and who was the -- Peter Holly.
Peter Holly and Mary Lang.
Oh, my God. So Nancy and I routinely tell old stories about the district, and we laugh and laugh and laugh. So I'm looking forward to more of that. The two Kates. Somehow, the two Kates have managed to both boot me from the board. Makes me a little nervous because I have a daughter named Kate. And I'm a little paranoid that she's planning on getting rid of me, too, so. Now, Jim Prohaska, I'm here to tell you, Jim Prohaska cannot be trusted. He is absolutely not trustworthy, and I have proof. See, I coached 43 seasons back in the day when I was a teacher and a coach, 43 sport seasons. And Jim Prohaska was an official one time in one of my games and made yet another bad call. There was never any bad coaching decisions. But when the officials are out to get you, there's not much you can do as a coach. So I pulled him over and I said, "Jim, you can't kick me out of the game for what I'm thinking, can you?" And he said, "Well, obviously not. I can't do that." And I said, "Well, I want to tell you, I think you are the worst official I've ever experienced in my life. And you ought to find something better to do." So what does Prohaska do? He kicks me out of the game. You can't trust him. I told you. Tammy? We have walked 10 years on and off together on this school board, miles in the moccasins. And every now and then, when we would have a -- we had some crazy school board meetings, some really good school board meetings, but some really intense times. I loved it. I'd look out and I'd see a big crowd here, and I'd be thinking, you know, this is democracy in action. But I kind of had the jaws line in my head where, you know, I'd look at the crowd and I'd be like, "I think we're going to need a bigger vote." And I'd look out and I'd think, "I think we're going to need a bigger gavel." So I know we've had some interesting times. So for you, Tammy, I have finally a gavel that this will keep order anywhere. So that's for you. And it'll also work wonders on your husband's steed. So I have that. A little bit of a treat for you there.
Thank you.
Kevin Keller, I have stolen -- I have stolen many Mr. Good bars from your candy jar. So that's for you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Hopefully, that kind of makes up for all of the Mr. Good bar theft. Let's see, what else do I have here? I'm almost done. Stan, it's been an honor to work with you for each of the five terms that have been on the school board. You came to the district in '03?
July 1st of '04.
July 1st of '04. So right at the tail end of my -- right in the middle of my first two terms. And then, of course, you've been here for the last three. So Stan and I knew each other in college. We go back a long, long way. So a lot of history with Stan. So when you have the best superintendent in the state, it's easy to look pretty good as board members. So you are probably about the biggest compliment that I can give is that you are like the Tom Brady to our Bill Belichick as a school. I know that will resonate with everybody out there. But you are truly the brains and the heart of this organization. So I have for you a picture of a brain and a heart. I actually went online. And you can actually order a brain and a heart online, but it's really illegal. And it surpasses the $3 limit that you have for like giving school board members and officials any kind of gifts. So there's that. Let's see, what else do I have here? Thanks to the administration and our staff members who helped guide me along the way, and especially the citizens. People say it's a thankless job. But our citizens always supported me. And they also let me have it when I messed up. Both of those things are really important when you're setting public policy, both parts of it. And my wife, Barb, if Barb wasn't so supportive, I could not have run 10 years ago. I just couldn't do it. I was not at a place in my life where I could. With young kids at home, I just couldn't do it. So if I was able to help and make any kind of a difference, Barb gets a chunk of that credit. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy.
If I could just echo what Tammy said, I want to thank you very much for all your service to the students of the Dubuque Community School District. You've been great. It's so great you came back and went to purgatory or whatever you did. And Tom, I'm going to kind of make a little comment here. If we ever need some stand-up comedy entertainment here on the board, would you be available sometime to do that?
I'm available.
Okay, great.
I am available. Nights and weekends.
Okay.
High fee, though, right? Which pay at this time.
Please come and visit our meeting sometimes.
Yeah.
We're going to miss you.
Tom, when I think of public servant, I think of you. I think five terms on the Board of Education, which is an elected volunteer position for which there is no pay. My goodness, five terms brings new meaning to public servant. And then to be called back when you were -- had the luxury of stepping away. And you said yes. That's public service. And thank you for your care for kids, your care for our staff, your care for this community for not only the long haul, both in quantity, but also in quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. It means a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, it looks like next is board salutes. Are there any board salutes out there?
I have one. A board salute goes out to our Dubuque Senior High School and Hempstead High School musicians who were selected as All-State Musicians by the Iowa High School Music Association. Less than 2% of students in the state are selected for this honor. We congratulate the seven students selected from All-State Orchestra, six students selected for All-State Band, and one student selected for All-State Band. We are also pleased to have six middle school students who were selected to participate in the state's Opus Honor Choir and two middle school students selected for the Iowa Junior Honors Orchestra. Congratulations to these outstanding student musicians on their accomplishments. I'd just like to add that our school district has been recognized by national organizations as far as making fine contributions in the area of music. So thank you to all the instructors. Thank you to the parents for allowing their students to participate in music. It's a very worthwhile adventure.
I have a board salute that is -- first, goes to all those who support our kids and our schools in so many different ways. You've heard me say before how blessed we are to live in a community that not only supports education, but is willing to step up and do work and offer support directly to the education of our kids. This particular board salute, I have the privilege of saying a special thank you to Premier Bank and its employees for their generous donation of winter clothing for students who will need it. Because of their support, hundreds of winter clothing items have been brought into our schools, coats, boots, gloves, hats. They're in our schools. They're ready when our students need them. And Premier Bank has made this generous donation really for many years. This is not a one-time thing. This is a -- which we'd be grateful for. But this is a many-year contribution that they make to our kids. And it has a very real, a very positive impact in the lives of our kids. We'll not know those specifics, the story specifically, except in the schools where they know that a child who needed a clothing item will now have it, when they otherwise would not have. So special thanks to Premier Bank and its employees.
Any other board salutes? Okay, that moves us to the visitors in open forum.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So persons wishing to address the board will do so at this time. Please state your name and your connection to the district. And we limit that to three minutes per person.
Ms. Quinn, do you want to stand up now? Because I can feel that.
No.
All right. So my name is Whitley Joel, and I'm a mother of four kids in Dubuque. My husband works full-time and serves in the military. I work full-time in addition to my side hustle. We're both active members in two different organizations, which adds three additional monthly meetings to our schedule. We have kids in four different schools, playing two different sports, and three different musical instruments, in plays, youth group, et cetera. For context, I participated in a meeting this weekend while literally sitting in a cabinet, painting, and contemplating my life choices. All that to say, we're a little busy. And I know we're not the only ones. So at the moment, I'm speaking for all families with crazy schedules. We can't always make it to these meetings. That doesn't mean that we don't care or aren't invested in the decisions made by this board. Sometimes, our attendance is watching the livestream or the recording after the fact, as our schedule allows. I review the agenda and the pack in advance, while the best has one cam with a 302-page doozy like we had today. And occasionally, something catches my eye. Two months ago, there was a policy up for approval that did. I prioritized attendance, got a babysitter, lined up dinner, everything else for the October meeting to raise my objections to a policy for an approval. I didn't ask you to outright disapprove it, only that you either table it until clarifications could be made or at least have some surrounding discussion so that I and other members could better understand the reasoning behind those changes. There was no discussion, not even the acknowledgement of concern raised by me or others who had emailed in advance. Whether intentional or not, the impression among many members of the community is that these public meetings are a formality to make motions and get the votes for the things that are discussed and decided on at the committee level. Discussions on masks were taken back to the committees after the meeting at Hempstead. Since that meeting, the minutes from these committee meetings regarding COVID decisions are simply all members of the board discussed masking and asked questions of the superintendent. Sorry, apparently, I can't read today. And the district is exploring additional policy consideration and requirements related to the COVID-19 testing distribution practices. As to the policy I was concerned about, it was addressed at a committee meeting it was addressed at a committee meeting that happened six days before the public would have been allowed to make public contents. And simply, the minutes read revised 10/11/21. For those watching the meeting tonight or the recording later on and are not aware, committee meetings are open to the public for those who can attend in person at 4:00 p.m. on a Monday. For those of you like me with a job that requires you to be there, therefore, if you ask for a link to join the Zoom meeting, you'll be told there isn't one. If you ask where the recordings are housed so you can watch it later, you'll be told these meetings are not recorded. You can come in person or you're in the dark. Board should immediately reevaluate the process in place to increase transparency. Streaming and recording these meetings and holding off on decisions until after the public comment is made would do that without adding too much of an undue burden on the Board Secretary, who does a fantastic job at answering emails. Thank you very much. You are all in charge of a nearly $200 million annual budget, a $30 million investment portfolio, 18 schools, and most importantly, our children. There's nothing discussed or concerning our kids or our money that should be readily available for public review at a time that's convenient for them. Anything less gives the illusion of impropriety, even when there may be none. Thank you.
Thank you.
My thoughts tonight are going to ducktail off of our concerns. My given name is Susan, born into Clan Kearns. My relationship to the school district is I am a mother of four children who have all been through and graduated from the community school district. So, I'm here in front of you today by special invitation to a public meeting with a quest that I am on. So, who in this room, on this school board, claims authority to prescribe and enforce a medical intervention upon the children, parents of the children, and we people of the Dubuque Community Common Unity School District? If not any person or persons present here today, who in this room or on this board may bring forth the person or persons claiming authority to prescribe medical intervention upon the children, parents of the children, and we people of the Dubuque Community Common Unity School District? Who in this room or on this board may present documentation demonstrating the isolation of said COVID-19 virus, any-all variants thereof, statistics of infection, illness, adverse mental health issues, hospitalization, death of any-all children in attendance in the community, Dubuque Community Common Unity School District, to support any-all policy policies in existence and proposals for future policies, development, implementation, and enforcement? Who in this room, on this board, will personally sign by notary a statement of full liability backed by bond for any-all adverse medical, mental health outcomes to a child, parents of a child, and we people of the Dubuque Community Common Unity School District? If not any person, persons present here today, when and where will person, persons be present with evidentiary documentation and signed liability statement? I put in front of you today, upon the requested documentation as made available, all existing policy policies be abandoned and left to the discretion of individual students, their parents, and employees, visitors to Dubuque Community Common Unity School District facilities and functions. And all proposed policymaking be tabled indefinitely until such time that person or persons are able to comply with the requested documentation as a justification in support of such authority. To those students, parents of students, and we people in attendance today and observing today, I have links available to review liability statements for your use or you may wish to contact your attorney of choice to assist you. Those in elected positions are to represent and reflect the wishes and values of the community, common unity. They are not an authority over we people. They are under our authority. They are expecting you to take the risk and liability for their actions. We overstand all they do in the name of the we people. Find your voice, find your path, and you will find your God-given authority. May the grace of God's peace and love be with you all. Thank you for your ear to hear.
Hi, my name is Lisa Bealow, and I have two children in the Dubuque Community School District. And I'd like to address tonight how the district's quarantine guidelines for close contacts and how we're supporting our students during their times of quarantine. Right now, the return-to-learn guidelines in the Dubuque Community School District state that unvaccinated household contacts to a positive COVID case should self-quarantine for 10 days from the last exposure. If an individual remains asymptomatic and tests negative for COVID five days or more following exposure, they can end their quarantine after seven days. All students and staff who are fully vaccinated against COVID do not need to quarantine if exposed to an individual who tests positive for COVID unless they begin to experience symptoms. We're all well aware right now that the vaccinated are getting and spreading COVID at the same rate or more than the unvaccinated. In fact, if the vaccinated are more likely to have asymptomatic or mild cases, they, in all probability, may be spreading the virus more readily. The fact that we're making different rules for vaccinated and unvaccinated persons makes no sense based on what we now know. Also, the Department of, excuse me, the Iowa Department of Public Health adjusted their COVID surveillance to follow the influenza model. This means that they are only contact tracing for outbreaks and for vulnerable populations. In addition, the IDPH isn't currently issuing isolation and quarantine orders for COVID-exposed individuals. So, if the Iowa Department of Public Health is adjusting COVID guidelines to model that of influenza, children should not need to quarantine at all. I looked at the CDC website to determine what was recommended for influenza at close contact and found nothing. It's simply not, nor has ever been done. In fact, the most current article I could find was from 2015, and even then, they didn't recommend quarantine for healthy individuals. It's simply not only recommended to monitor oneself for symptoms. Now, if we are going to continue to force healthy children to stay at home, at-home learning should be a priority for the district. I spoke with several parents of children who detail no support for their students during their quarantine time. One parent's child is a high school student and wasn't doing well in math prior to their isolation due to a family member's positive case. This high school student was out for two and a half weeks. During this time, the student reached out to their teachers to get work sent home. Child never received responses to their emails and fell even further behind. It was only when the parent got involved and emailed the school counselor and principal that the child was given their work and offered help. While some teachers are doing a fantastic job with quarantined students, others are simply dismissive. If we are going to continue with these strict guidelines for students, online learning and follow-up must be provided by the school district to ensure that these healthy and asymptomatic students aren't falling behind. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am Whitney Sanger, mother of five. I think most of you know who I am. I have two currently in the Dubuque Community School District. It is no secret that COVID-19 has presented many challenges to students, educators, and parents. While many of these are being addressed, one of these issues we seem to never talk about as a community and as a school district is obesity and comprehensive health. A study published by the CDC looked at 432,000 people between the ages of two and 19 years old, and found, among other things, that the percentage of obese children and teens increased to 22% compared with 19 before the pandemic. I think it is safe to say, we are all very well aware that the highest risk of severe COVID illness was associated with obesity. I have been sitting in these meetings, listening, observing, and reflecting. Here is what I found. Many board members have shared that children's health is their first priority. And while that may hold true in regards to wearing a mask, getting a vaccine, and social distancing, we seem to forget to talk about what health really is: nutrition, movement, sleep, brain health, and so much more. The concept of health was a large reason why I ran for school board in the first place. I realized as a parent, my children were not getting enough movement during school. Lunches did not meet my standards. Snacks became nonexistent, and brain health simply wasn't talked about. While I understand there are many barriers in place regarding these issues, I know nothing is impossible to fix. As many of you know, I'm not one to sit by and wait to see things happen. So, I did my research and found the Dubuque Community School District has a wellness policy. It's policy 5405. And in that policy, it states, "The Board recognizes the importance of a healthy school environment and encompasses nutrition, nutrition education, food serve in schools, and physical activity. The Board also recognizes the importance of promoting a healthy lifestyle for students at school and advocating the value of family involvement." I would like to repeat that word, "family involvement." It also states that the superintendent will direct the Wellness Committee to monitor and review the district-wide wellness. For the past two years, I have inquired about this Wellness Committee and have continued to receive a different variation of the same response. It's in the works. While I understand that our nurses are worn thin by the pandemic, now more than ever, we need to focus on comprehensive health, proactive health, not reactive health. Parents want to be involved. Yet I hear time and time again that they don't feel there is a platform to create that change, especially when it comes to health. While this is not a policy you are speaking of today, I'm here to ask you that you please consider making health a priority in conjunction with COVID-19 by reinstating the Wellness Committee and bringing true health back into the conversation, especially while involving parents. So, again, that's policy 5405. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. State Representative Chuck Eisenhardt, 1665 Kaufman Avenue. It's been a couple of years, at least, since any of your local state representatives have had a chance to address you in person for obvious reasons. In the meantime, we've all learned how to meet by electronic means. So, I'm here just as making a general proposition that we're available to you as we enter another legislative session where we review both state policy and state funding priorities to be at your disposal for any meeting, at any time, on any topic. And whether we're in town or not, we've learned how to succeed very well in terms of having those Zoom and other electronic meetings necessary. A lot of times, what happens down in Des Moines happens on the spur of the moment. I remember calling up Superintendent Ryan Gans at 9:00 in the morning to discuss a bill that both of us just learned about, that passed and signed by the governor less than 18 hours later. So, we understand the importance of being in close touch, and I think I speak for other legislators in the community that we share that proposition. I would like to associate myself with the previous comments about health. I personally have been an advocate for nutrition programs more robust at the school level, in particular, universal free school breakfast. I don't know about you, but if I go to work without eating breakfast, I'm pretty worthless until I have lunch. And I have to believe that anybody who goes to school with a growling stomach is going to have problems learning. So, whether it's that or other food-related issues, I stand personally willing to help advocate for that. Also, we know that you've come under many more significant expectations in terms of other forms of health, not the obvious one COVID-related, but mental health and substance use and those issues as well. And we've been trying, some of us, to get stronger resources in your hands to help you deal with those. Haven't been successful always, but I feel like that we need to keep ganging up and speaking up and waving that flag until we can come to the rescue with the resources you need. So, if there's anything particular, we know that there's significant federal funding that has come to us and continues to come to us. There are very few strings attached to that money in terms of what can be done with it, especially if it relates to health and responding to the impacts of the pandemic. So, whether it's your SIR funds or other funds that you'd like to access, don't be afraid to contact us because the department heads are very willing to speak with us. And if something can't be done, they'll be very upfront with us in terms of why it can't be done. Sometimes, it's just a matter of asking. And so, if there's anything related to testing, resources, or whatever, don't be afraid, again, to call us. The attitude I've taken over the last couple of years as we face this national emergency, health emergency, is that the public health science has long been pretty clear. And it's not my role as an elected official to second-guess the public health scientists. It's our responsibility to get behind them and to start learning and understanding the lessons we've learned over time and supporting them in the recommendations that they make to us. The Constitution, the state of Iowa that I've sworn to uphold, and you as well, state in the...
Time. Yeah, check your time with us, sorry.
Thank you.
Hello, Amy Carley, mother of one in the district. I am following up with comment on the 7th grade social studies curriculum that I brought to the attention of the school board during the November 8th school board meeting. While I do appreciate the swift action to stop the curriculum that was not only inappropriate at 7th grade, for 7th grade students, but also in violation of Iowa law, specifically HR 802 and probably Iowa Code 279.5, I did attend the Ed Programs Committee meeting last Tuesday and left a little confused and disappointed. First, the curriculum change was spun in a way that made it sound like the change was made because teachers were uncomfortable with the topics, not because of parent complaint. If teachers did, in fact, express discomfort in teaching the curriculum, when were these complaints first brought up? And why did it take public parent complaint to address the issue? The curriculum, according to Mark Burns, was taught all last school year. Why was the curriculum even allowed to be taught this school year when it is an obvious violation of HR 802 that was signed into law in July? Because the presentation was so vague, I don't understand if the curriculum was permanently removed or is going to be shuffled around and reintegrated. Also, was the backup curriculum that's currently being used already approved by the school board? What steps have been taken to review the curriculum and other subjects and other grade levels to ensure the content is not only age-appropriate but also legal? It is very obvious to me, as I speak with other parents, that there are teachers in our school district unleashing an inappropriate agenda upon our kids. We need to protect our children's innocence and stop the early sexualization, sexual confusion, and sexual and political indoctrination of our children. We need to stop teaching them to put people into categories and instead focus on what brings us together. It is obvious to me that there's an agenda to divide us. We need to do our part to stop this. And I'd also like to address the elephant in the room. I'm aware that the mask policy is going to be brought back to the table for discussion next month in committee due to a high school student that was hospitalized with COVID. My heart goes out to this child, and I do pray for healing for him. That being said, according to the child's mother, he received three COVID injections and wore a mask at school and in public. It's obvious to me that she's grieving his illness and wanting to place claim somewhere. I can empathize with that. What I cannot get on board with is putting a face mask on every student. We've already spent many hours addressing this topic. If a child has received three COVID injections and wears a mask regularly and still tests positive for COVID, what makes you think that forcing similar measures on other students will result in positive outcomes? Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Wayne Kennecker. And I had three children that went through the Dubuque Community School system and will soon have some grandchildren involved. I'm going to narrow my focus a little bit just because of some of the things that I've heard here already. And I think one of the things that we've talked about many times and have continued to struggle with, and that is the communication path between parents, community, the school board, and the school district. I've talked to some folks that struggle when they have a concern. And I'll use an example of one of these concerns that I became aware of recently. And it had to do with an English assignment in the Dubuque Community School District recently that had to do with assigning a book that the name of the book is "The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian." And what's concerning about that is it's hard to expect board members, even principals, to understand exactly everything that's going on in their school. There's a lot going on. That particular book was the purpose, it appears to have been, to address culture issues. The concern that comes from that book has to do with the fact that one of the topics in that book has to deal with masturbation. And this is a 7th grade class. It's not a sex education class. It's not a health class. It's an English class. And to me, that is not acceptable to use that as a topic for an English class, talking about culture. But what's more, where I started to go with this was is how that's communicated, okay? So, for a concerned parent, how is that effectively communicated? How is it either acted upon if it needs to be? And how does that parent or even a group of people get feedback on what was actually done effectively? We talked about and we heard about some of the challenges to come to the committee meetings at 4:00, the recordings that were there sometimes and not. I think those are some pretty easy communication things that can be adjusted to make things more effective between the school district, the school board, the parents, the teachers, the principals. I've taken a couple of issues, I'll say, up the flagpole. And you don't know exactly where to go with it. Do you go to the principal first? Do you go to the school board first? You know, where does it go? So, if people get in the habit of sending emails out to a mass of people, and then you wait to hear, and you might not hear back. You know, we've heard that tonight, that some people haven't heard back of when they generate a concern. Now, I get it. Excuse me.
That was the time, I'm sorry. I don't know, it was a little quieter.
That's one of my issues. Three minutes to stand here and try to communicate effectively is not the right way to do this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would wish to address the board at this time? Seeing none?
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we're to the consent agenda items.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. Are there any items that any board member would wish to pull from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so that brings us to committee reports. So I was chairing that committee, so I can still provide a brief overview. We learned some things, especially about kind of the financial standing of the district as it comes to the budget and looking forward with SIR funds and things like that. There's also a number of motions related to some facilities, so we'll go through those. I move that the Board of, should I be moving these? No, okay, someone else, sorry. Someone else. Okay, thanks.
I move the Board of Education approve the donation of a sitting bench from the class of nineteen seventy-one to Hempstead High School.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of a sitting bench from the class of nineteen seventy-one to Hempstead High School. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to add that this is the first graduating class from Hempstead High School. Hempstead opened in the sixty-nine, seventy school year, but it was only had juniors there. That was the highest class they had, so the following year were the seniors. So if I attribute to a school of these, they're going to place it in the courtyard somewhere.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education receive and approve the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one comprehensive annual financial report.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and approve the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one comprehensive annual financial report. Is there any discussion?
Kevin, it says a new name for it, or?
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes, the report's new name, they just transferred a couple of different verbs in there. It's now called the annual comprehensive financial report instead of the comprehensive annual financial report. So they just rotated a couple of words in the document.
Keeping us on our toes.
I won't go into the history as to why, but it was changed this past year. So tonight, we're asking the district, the board, to approve the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. I'll just make a couple of brief comments about the document itself. The document has four sections in it. There's an introductory section, a financial section, a statistical section, as well as a compliance section. In the introductory section, it talks about what this document is and all the things that are contained in it. It also has some information that pertains only to our district. The financial section includes the independent auditor's report. And for this year, we received an unmodified or clean opinion. And what that means is the statements presented are materially correct, so, and they're fairly presented. That's what an unmodified opinion means. Also, in that section is the management's discussion and analysis. And there are some good points that you should review, and citizens can take a look at that as well, as to really, that's the narrative for the past fiscal year. So the things that took place are described that in a narrative form rather than the numbers. You know, we have all their tables and schedules and et cetera. But this is really a good way to explain the activity in the district. You know, it talks about what we went through in two thousand twenty-one. It also has points about what we're facing in the future. So it's a good, good section to read to understand what's taking place in the district. There's also a place called the statistical section. And what that is, it contains about twenty-two, twenty-three tables that have a ten-year history of different pieces of information on the district, from enrollment to funds and how they operated to tax levies and things like that, the size of buildings, the square footage, their history. All of that is in the statistical section. And finally, there's the compliance section, which is a very important piece of this. And I say that because there's reports from the auditor on review of our internal controls. That document is in there, their opinion on that, and we had no findings for that. There's reports on the compliance of our federal programs. Did the district do all the things that are necessary to receive our federal funds? And that, again, there was no findings with that. And then finally, there's called a section called the schedule of findings and questioned costs. So that's where the auditors will kind of summarize the audit and things that they did find, if they found anything. And this year, there are two, a couple, comments about enrollment. And the reason they reported on them is because that's a statutory requirement. If there's any variances, they're required to report on that. And one of them was a point zero five F T E, so it's very minimal. And the other one was a two point oh on our certified enrollment. Again, very minimal when we have ten thousand four hundred students. So again, they have to comment on it, but we feel as a district, we're in control of that. We have good processes and procedures to make sure they're accurate. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions on it?
I have no questions, but I'd just like to compliment you again. I know that not all school districts have the annual comprehensive financial report. And I know that you have received numerous awards for compiling this report. So thank you very much to you, Kevin, and to your staff for being so thorough and so professional.
Thank you, Jim. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank a couple of members of the business department. Both Rick Till and Sarah Fob spent a lot of time and energy and effort on this hundred and fifty-two-page document. So they're a reason, big reason why this is the way it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt a resolution naming Hewlett Packard as the sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution naming Hewlett Packard as the sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to C E C Communications Engineering Company on the Hempstead High School intercom replacement project in the increased amount of five thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number three to the C E C Communications Engineering Company on the Hempstead High School intercom replacement project in the increased amount of five thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hoover Elementary School boiler replacement project, and set the date, time, and location as February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty P M. at the Dubuque Community School District, two thousand three hundred Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hoover Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as February fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at five thirty P M. at the Dubuque Community School District, two thousand three hundred Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Phew, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of heart rate sensors that are no longer of use to the district.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of heart rate sensors that are no longer of use to the district. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to add that these are, there are some institutions in town here that are interested in using some of these. They're rather obsolete. We've gone to more of a wristwatch-type heart rate sensor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thanks, Jim, for doing those motions. And next is Mr. Sancy with the Ed Programs Committee.
Yes, I do have one motion. But before, when we meet on our committee, and we meet on the first Tuesday of each month, and typical, you'll have this same kind of infrastructure when you walk in. We usually talk about various programs that the schools and teachers want to inform the board about, and then also will review policies that are coming before us. And then we also have any other discussions that we want to talk about, either the board wants to bring up or community members. So this past week or month, we did talk about the social studies, and then we also talked about the Iowa Career and Technical Education Service that we offer. And all of our programs that we offer here in the district, we try to be very intentional, and we're not perfect, but to make sure that first it aligns with what the state says, so Iowa core. And then we break it down to make sure it aligns with our strategic plan. And one of the things that we all talk about as a board is making sure that all of our programs and services are culturally relevant. And so, of course, you know, we appreciate the parents' input and just know that we want to continue to work with and never against. And so we did talk about our social studies, our C T E update, that we work hand in hand with N I C C to make sure that students who are in our district before they graduate, they can leave with some meaningful opportunities that gets them ahead in life. So you can take community courses here at the district, which we encourage a lot of our students to participate in, especially through our Vertex program. Various policies that we reviewed, we did have board members who wanted an update on our COVID procedures so far, like how's it going, anything that we need to be aware of. And then we spent a lot of our time talking about superintendent search. And so as you guys heard earlier, something we don't want to do, but it's going to happen, we'll be losing our superintendent. So really talking about process. What is that process to make sure we're engaging parents, teachers, everyone, to make sure that whoever comes in, we still have a superintendent that wants to engage everyone, to do what's best for all students. And that was a variety of our discussion that day. But my emotion for today is I move that the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption request as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption request as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sancy, for that update. It's now to new business, and the first thing on the agenda is to appoint a board secretary.
I move the Board of Education appoint Caroline Carrie Moss as secretary.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Caroline Carrie Moss as secretary. Is there any discussion?
Welcome, Carrie. Again, thank you.
Been leading us very well so far. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Should I go? Carrie, you can raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're so happy.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as treasurer.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as treasurer. Is there any discussion?
Kevin, you're doing a great job. We love having you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Kevin, we have an oath for you, too. Can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Treasurer in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties as of now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you, Kevin.
I move the Board of Education name the following financial institution as depositories for district funds in the amount of fifty million each. Collins Community Credit Union, Dubuque Bank and Trust, DuPaco Community Credit Union, Dutrack Community Credit Union, Fidelity Bank and Trust, I S J I T, Midwest One Bank, Premier Bank, U M B Bank, and U S Bank.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name the following financial institutions as depositories for the district funds in the amount of fifty million dollars each. Collins Community Credit Union, Dubuque Bank and Trust, DuPaco Community Credit Union, Dutrack Community Credit Union, Fidelity Bank, I S J I T, Midwest One Bank, Premier Bank, U M B Bank, U S Bank. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education establish the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at five thirty P M. at the forum, and strategic plan meetings the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at five thirty P M. at the forum.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education establish the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at five thirty P M. at the forum, and strategic plan meetings the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at five thirty P M. at the forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education name the Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name the Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education name Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer P.C. as the official legal counsel of record.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer P.C. as the official legal counsel of record. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education receive and file the abstract of votes for the school board election on November second, two thousand twenty-one.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file the abstract of votes for the school board election on November second, two thousand twenty-one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number eight one four eight five three.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education make, take no further disciplinary action related to student number eight one four eight five three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution appointing paying agent, bond, register, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond, register, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of same.
Second. Oh, sorry. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution appointing paying agent, bond, register, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond, register, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of same. Roll call vote.
Bradley?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Parks?
Aye.
Prohoska?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Sancy?
Aye.
Whitman?
Aye.
I move that the Board of, I move that the form of tax exemption credit be placed on file and approved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved. Roll call vote.
Jones?
Aye.
Parks?
Aye.
Prohoska?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Sancy?
Aye.
Whitman?
Aye.
Bradley?
Aye.
That motion passes.
I move the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of the issuance and securing the payment of nine million one hundred and sixty-five thousand school infrastructure sales, service, and used tax revenue refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-two sales, service, and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2022A, of the Dubuque Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapters 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $9,165,000 school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2022A, of the Dubuque Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapters 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote.
Parks?
Aye.
Prohoska?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Sancy?
Aye.
Whitman?
Aye.
Bradley?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That motion carries, passes. That looks to be the end of new business. Is there any board member or administrative issues not on the agenda? Hearing none? Seeing none? We are adjourned. Do your little gavel. Thank you.